Good evening, everybody. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the City Council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits, and on our knowledge of the community. We then either make a determination or recommendation to the City Council. Testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record and print your name on the sign-up sheet outside the door. Each case will be introduced by staff and a list of documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant will be given an explanation of the proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have the chance to do so, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Max Pincel.
Present.
Lisa Deacon.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Myrna Aravalo.
Here.
Kirill Mirinev.
Here.
Jill Zorden.
Okay. I will now swear in anyone who plans to give testimony in any of the cases scheduled for tonight. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. We need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 21st.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 21st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So today, we have three cases on our agenda. However, the first one is an open motion for conditional approval, and I hope that the people that are coming this time that weren't here last time had a chance to read the meeting minutes. Okay, we'll probably just go over the motion because there was a lot of stuff with it. Then we will have 1327 Chicago Avenue and then 1825 Lamar Avenue. Can I get a motion to continue that to March 17th, 2020? From anyone?
I move in the matter of ZBA 20ZMJV-005, 1825 Lamar Avenue, that we continue that case to the March 17th agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So moving into our first, 1224 Oak. Is the respondent here? Is the respondent here for 1224 Oak?
The person.
You guys. Okay, so I wanted to look at that motion. Melissa, did you bring copy of that? That's not it. Okay. Standards. Okay, "At the time, Mr. Mirinev motioned to recommend approval of the request, which was seconded by Ms. Aravalo with the following conditions: removal of the second floor, roof screen porch above the proposed garage, and replacement with an open rooftop deck and railing. A roofed elevator shaft shall be permitted at number two. The applicant shall develop the subject property in substantial compliance with the testimony and representations of the applicant to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the plans and documents on this file. The motion failed to reach four concurrent votes. It was three to one and will be considered with the testimony closed." So we can't have further testimony, but that's the motion that was made. So I am going to ask, since it was made and seconded, I'm going to put that back on the floor and ask the people that were not at the meeting, that read the meeting minutes, to tell me if they are yea or nay. So all in favor?
So wait, before we move to that, I have some questions that I want to...I assume that we can have discussion here among us here.
The board is welcome to deliberate. We just cannot ask any questions back since testimony is closed.
So, may I start with some questions?
Please.
So, I read all the meeting minutes. Kirill and Myrna, I'm curious of your opinions based on, you know, the back and forth that's happened. And then, you know, Kirill, your suggestion of the removal of the second-floor screen porch, whether you feel like this is, you know, the least minimum that's now needed in order for this proposal to move forward?
Yes, the discussions were in this direction. We had some deliberations on the required distances of the new deck to the south property line, which is only a foot, but it is against a park and probably never there will be something on this side. So we discussed that this could be allowed. Then we discussed the bulk of the structure and the relationship mainly to the property on the north. And no matter that my strong opinion that this is an ugly building on the north, it is a property that could be developed later on in different manner, and we don't know, and we cannot predict what will happen there. So the more we comply with distances and with bulk regarding the relationship between the two properties, the better. We discussed mainly the three-car garage and whether it could be two-car and open parking space, but the opinion kind of dominated that the three-car garage is a better option. So we started agreeing with the smaller distances to the property line, again to the north. But I personally, and I believe other members of the board, agreed that the roofed deck on the second floor is the biggest hurdle. So finally, during the discussion, and I proposed this motion with eliminating the roofed porch, the roofed deck.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Myrna, anything else to add?
No. Basically, what we did is we took...we kept the elevator.
Yeah.
As an enclosed elevator, obviously, and just removed the screen porch that had any kind of roofing or anything on that and just left it as an open deck.
So one of my questions that I had to Melissa is, I understand that, you know, the residential structure requires three parking garage...or three parking spaces, three off-street parking spaces, but it occurred to me as I was reading this that we're sort of twisting ourselves into all these contortions and variances in order to make room for our cars here. And so my question to Melissa was, you know, what would be the process and do we even want to consider what it would look like if it was only requiring two cars?
You know, I think that at the first meeting, because this was discussed at the meeting prior to this as well.
Yeah.
The objective here is for the Metz family to age in place and to accommodate their daughter downstairs. And they...if you go by the property and you look at it, I'm assuming that you did that too, you know, it's that first block in from Ridge Avenue.
Yep.
So I think that there are peculiarities to the property that, in my estimation, would make the three-car garage, which would accommodate the inclusion of the elevator.
Yeah.
And the, you know, aging in place and having space outdoors for the couple that has the upper flat, that that was a preferable design, given all of the other...that they're backed up against the basketball court. And then, you know, just a short block from Ridge Avenue. So I think that those were discussed quite a lot at the first go-around on this matter.
Thank you.
Any further discussion about this? Okay. Any other questions for the board? All right. And so, the motion is approval of the request with the two conditions. That was removal of the second-floor roof screen porch above the proposed garage and replacement with an open rooftop deck and railing, and the applicant shall develop the property in substantial compliance with the testimony that they represented at the last meeting. So I want to ask the members that weren't present, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So Melissa, what happens next?
Heading up over the meetings, are we at six to one together?
Yeah.
Okay, we are the determining body. Congratulations. Thank you for sticking it out with us for multiple meetings.
Thank you for coming. Okay. So where is my agenda? So moving on to our first case of new business, 1327 Chicago Avenue slash 528 Greenwood Street. Melissa, will you read this into the record and the respondent?
Richard A. Shapiro, applicant submits for a special use for an office for Richard Shapiro, attorney-at-law, in the R5 General Residential District, zoning code section 6873. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Included along with the Zoning Board of Appeals packet is a binder of information from the applicant that everyone should have, as well as one letter of opposition that was received today.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Quinn. I'm Mr. Shapiro's attorney. I'm from the law firm of Riley Safer Homes in Concilla, and with me is my colleague, Ruth Krugley, also from the Riley Safer Homes in Concilla Law Firm. Unfortunately, Mr. Shapiro, Richard Shapiro, couldn't come this evening because he's got spinal stenosis and he's basically on the flat of his back. So we thought it would be best if Ms. Krugley and I presented the information and then to the extent that the board needs to interrogate or ask questions of Mr. Shapiro that I can't answer tonight, he would be certainly assuming in a month's time that his condition has improved, and we certainly hope it is. He's under a doctor's care right now, that he would be able to come and answer any further question that the members of the board would have. So if it's all right with all of you, then I'll just proceed and present Mr. Shapiro's application.
Just to add to that, this case has been continued once by the city and once previously by the applicant. So in discussing with the applicant, I did urge them to come and at least begin the case tonight so that we can get through at least some of it, but I do think it will be pertinent to have the applicant himself here at the next meeting. So I would urge everyone, if everyone is okay with it, to hear the case tonight, get through as much as we can, but then leave testimony open and continue it to March.
Okay.
And I think we can really go through a lot of the evidence and the submissions relating to the various criteria for a special use permit, as well as office location within a residential area. Mr. Shapiro has been a resident of Evanston for about 34 years. Originally, he was a renter in the 1327 Chicago Avenue location, and it was there as a renter that he began his law practice with his mom and his aunt helping him. It was a very small practice. He lived in the building. And over time, it grew. He was able to purchase 1327 in 1998 when he continued to live there and had his mom and his aunt helping and a couple of additional folks come in to work with him. And in 2002, when the owner decided to sell 1327...well, 1998 is when he bought it, but in 2002, he bought a condominium right next door in the location which is, I believe it's 1319, in the 20-unit condominium building. He purchased the Greenwood Avenue 528 location in 2013 at a foreclosure sale, and beginning in 2014, he also used that for his real estate practice. It has grown gradually over time, but he's been very successful, especially in representing Evanston residents with respect to property tax appeals. I believe that he has helped about 2,300 or 2,400 residents of Evanston in connection with the work that he has done. Currently, he has about 22 people who work at the Greenwood address and 22 at the Chicago Avenue address. But as I'm going to explain in a moment, the nature of his practice is very much one that is by telephone and online. Very seldom, less than 1% of the time, really a fraction of 1% of the time, do the clients that he serves actually show up at the residences. And similarly, of the folks that he employs, many of them, from one time to another, work remotely. So I think as Scott Mangum noted at the DAPR hearing, when you look, if you sat across the street in the Bank of America and looked at those two buildings, you would just assume that they were normal residences. It's not a case where there is a lot of intense use on the exterior of the building or where clients come in. I brought in the first tab of the book, I thought it would be useful to take a look at the area immediately surrounding the two houses. And it's important, I think, you all know Evanston quite well, obviously, but these are the only two houses on that block on Chicago Avenue. The Greenwood address is really right on the corner, and although the front entrance is on Greenwood, the house...the whole side of the house sits on Chicago Avenue. And then there is the 1327 location, but after that, it's a 20-unit condominium building, followed by a 35-unit apartment building, and on the same block, it is zoned, I believe this zoning at the bottom is B1, and right across the street, it's B2. So the two are on Chicago Avenue, which, as you all know, is a very busy thoroughfare. It's controlled access thoroughfare that runs the length of Evanston. And so this is really a very busy street. There's a light at Greenwood, there's a light at Dempster, there's traffic on this street all the time. But these are the only two buildings that were originally single-family residences. And I think it's pretty important because although there's a reference in the staff memo that is surrounded on three sides by residences, when you really look, the reality is, to the north, it's the First Presbyterian Church parking lot. To the west, it's the Bank of America building. And to the south, it's a very large condominium building, an apartment building, closely followed by all of this commercial. And on the west side of the street, it's all commercial throughout the entire length of it. Greenwood Avenue behind it is residential, and Hinman on the other side of the alley is also residential. But there really isn't much contact at all with Mr. Shapiro's two buildings in terms of a residential location. The second point that I want to emphasize is the one that I mentioned at the beginning, which is the actual use of these residences is not truly intense. His business is conducted either online or over the telephone because people don't need to come to his office in order to present the information for their cases that they want to...where they want to appeal their property tax. In fact, if there's a need for face-to-face contact, typically, it's at the client's home because there may be a need to take pictures of the home, to present the evidence with respect to a property tax appeal. So very, very few people actually come into the office, and he's made it clear to the clients that they have no need to come in, and in fact, he would just as soon prefer that they transact the business over the phone. So typically, there's never more than one or two clients who visit during the course of the day. He's never had more than three clients in his office at one time, and as I say, it's just a handful of customers who come in and visit. With respect to the question of parking, Mr. Shapiro has rented behind the 1320s, he has three spots in front, and as I'll make a point of in a moment, he is absolutely in agreement with the staff to convert one of those to a handicap spot that's sufficiently large to accommodate a van.
I'm sorry, are those three spots in front on the street or on his private property? Okay.
They're off-street. I'm sorry. It's off-street parking. But behind, there are 11 parking spots that he has leased from his neighbors. And on top of that, he leases...I'm sorry.
Can I just speak in the mic so we can pick it up?
Sure. I'm sorry. So he rents 11 spots from his neighbors directly behind that location. He also rents 11 spots at the Holiday Inn, a couple of blocks north. He has two spots at the 1200 Chicago Avenue location and another spot at Elmwood and Dempster. So all told, he rents approximately 27 parking spaces. Half of his employees, at least half, take public transportation, or they may...some of them ride their bikes, some of them walk. As you know, the...get back to the microphone, sorry. The L stop is very close by. It's the Dempster stop right here. The Davis train station stop is a couple of blocks north of where these two residences are located, and so half the people will...don't need parking. The other half park in one of those spots. He specifically checked with his neighbors to find out if any of them have had anyone else ask for parking spots or would even be willing to rent to anyone, and they say no, they haven't had that, and they rent to Richard because they regard him as a really good neighbor. And they don't park on the street themselves in order to lease the spots. So these are parking spots that, in all likelihood, if Richard weren't there, probably wouldn't be used to the same degree. And we're really not aware of any residents in the area at all, in that surrounding area, on Hinman or on Greenwood, who are unable to park their cars as a result of Richard's His neighbors, he's also talked to them, and if he were here, you could certainly ask questions. They do not object to his use. In fact, they regard him as a good neighbor. I think if you look in your packet, the condo association, which, you know, like condo associations, is really composed of a lot of different people who have concerns, and in that packet, they had a number of different concerns. But at the end of the day, they say they don't object because Richard has been a good neighbor. He makes sure that his walks are shoveled. He...the use, as I indicated earlier, the exterior use is not intense at all. And one of the other factors that is very important to Richard, and he has undertaken, we said this at DAPR and certainly want to make it clear again, he's only asking for a special use to run during the time that he owns the property. He's not asking for a permanent special use. So to the extent he wants to sell the property in the future, he's perfectly happy with it returning to residential use. But as I said, these are the only two buildings, residence, single-family residences on that block on either side of the street. But nevertheless, he's prepared to do that, and if it means that he would have to take a financial hit as a result of it, he's perfectly prepared to do it. And he's told that to his neighbors, and, you know, he certainly intends to honor that, and that's all he's really asking from this board in terms of a recommendation.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I know that you're saying the special use would run only with his ownership.
Right.
Do you know if this property has been reclassified with the Cook County Assessor?
It has not, and that's one point I want to make very clear, too. He's perfectly prepared. He understands. You know, over time, this business grew, and we've talked to the staff about this, that he would fully intend to go to the assessor's office and backdate this and whatever he needs to do to make amends.
I'm sure they'll come to him before that.
Well, I think...
But another question, though, because I've had this experience.
Okay.
It is not that easy to reverse a reclassification of a property with the Cook County Assessor. So if this property is reclassified as a commercial use or a business use and taxed accordingly at 25% of its assessed value, et cetera, then people come to rely on that income, the school districts, et cetera, and someone buying a home has to really bend over backwards to have the county assessor reclassify the property, just as a point of information.
Okay. Understood, and we'll take it in that vein. My point is that Richard is not asking that it be permanently reclassified as, you know, a special use. And to the extent that the challenge or whatever would need to be done to assist in reclassifying that, if the new owners want that in this board or the city of Evanston wants it to be reclassified, Richard is fully prepared to cooperate in any way to make sure that that happens.
May I pose a question?
Sure.
Can you clarify what precipitated the request for the special use now? You stated that this business has been operating there for many years, first the first residence and then the second one was added later. So what is the precipitating event for this?
I think that it was the city of Evanston coming to Richard and indicating...I'm not sure what triggered the city's interest or concern, but that's really was the precipitating event.
Melissa, anything to add to that or no? I believe there was an anonymous complaint made to the city.
So for how many years, then, do we have a tax attorney that was assisting Evanston clients in, you know, appealing their property taxes, which, you know, appropriate to do so, understood, but we have a tax attorney that was, I believe, illegally operating his businesses out of residential structures? I find ironic, and it's coming before our attention because it was, you know, flagged as, you know, flagged to city staff. So I don't know if you have any comment on any of that, but I find it...
Well, as I indicated, it was, you know, his business grew not by leaps and bounds, but it was gradual, and it began as a home business. And he recognizes that he should have taken steps earlier to seek a special use permit and to get this reclassified. He recognizes that now, and he understands that he's got to do whatever is necessary in order to make amends for that.
So are you testifying that it was never his intention, this was not as a means of saving money on his tax assessment?
No, I don't...I think it was just not...I think it was not something that he really focused on.
What was the difference? What would the difference have been over those years of operation, having it classified as a residential property versus having it classified as a commercial property? Do we know?
Huge.
Are you talking about the money, Lisa?
I am.
Oh.
I don't know, but all I can say is, to the extent that he needs to make amends for that and the county reassesses and seeks back taxes, he's prepared to pay them.
Yeah, the county will, I'm sure, seek restitution, but the difference, just as an example, a property that was a legal non-conforming residential, a property that we renovated to be a mixed use, you know, a live-work loft space, was nonetheless in a C-zone. And so after it was renovated, the county came back and reclassified it as commercial, and the taxes went from $2,000 one year to $38,000 the next year. So a commercial...
So a commercial property is taxed at 25% of its assessed value, which is a very huge number. And so over the course of 20 years, there's been a lot of tax revenue loss to the school districts. And again, I do understand, you start it as a home business, and it grows, but this is somebody who knew. That's, I just, you know, an explanation would, you know, probably be in order.
Well, you could certainly ask Mr. Shapiro. What I can tell you is what I just said, which he recognizes, that it should have been reclassified earlier, and he's prepared to make amends. He does serve Evanston citizens. Those people who come to work in those two buildings, byproducts, eat, they contribute to Evanston's economy. And where those two buildings are located, I think it really, the question on the table, because he's going to satisfy that requirement with respect to the reclassification, notifying the assessor, paying whatever needs to be paid in the way of back taxes in order to stay in that location. He dearly loves being a resident of Evanston and operating his law practice in those buildings in Evanston. He doesn't want to have to move out of town. And he would much rather be here, if he can. And the part I was going to mention next is how much he's willing to invest in order to satisfy any concerns regarding building. It's about $200,000 for sprinkling systems, fire alarm systems, and the like in the interior of the buildings. And although we certainly believe that the accessibility modifications probably are unnecessary in light of the kinds of accommodations that can be done for both clients and employees, meaning you go to those few clients who do want to see you face-to-face to their homes. It's one of the few practices where you can still have house calls, and he's prepared to do that. And with employees, some already work remotely, and in 2020, the idea of remote work is becoming more and more common. And he's prepared to do that if there are employees, some employees do have illnesses and others, so at least four of them right now work remotely. So there are ways to address that accessibility issue, short of the kind of structural changes to the exterior of the building that have been suggested. There, as I think both the staff and we agree, they're not required for purposes of a special use permit. We think that if, and you all know better than I do, that if you do the lift outside and other kinds of external modifications, it probably would require the Historic Preservation Commission to sign off on it. But if that's what this board decides to be necessary in order for Mr. Shapiro to continue to have his law practices, he's prepared to make the kinds of changes that are set forth in the site plan, that his architect, Elliot Dudnick, is prepared to put a lift, increase the size of the landing, there's a south portico, if you will, with an entrance, widen the sidewalk, and make the changes to the interior of that office space there so that that portion is handicap accessible. That's probably going to cost another $75,000 to $100,000. So in total, Mr. Shapiro is prepared to invest approximately $300,000 in order to be able to continue his practice there.
Sir, I have a question before you go further. So I was reading in the materials that you employ 40 lawyers?
No, no.
How many, do you think?
Most of them are paralegals. In fact, I think Mr. Shapiro is probably the only lawyer in the practice.
So you employ 40 people at this location?
Yeah, it's actually, I think, 44, 22 in each of the buildings.
And four of them, you're saying, work remotely?
In addition to those folks, there's another four people who work remotely.
And so the rest of them pretty much come every day?
Not every day. There's probably another 10 or so who may choose to work remotely one or two times a week. So in our law practice, we found that to be the case, particularly with millennials and others. They do like working remotely, and Mr. Shapiro has recognized that. So the peak that would be in each of the two buildings at any one time would be 22 people.
In each building?
Yes, that's right. That's why DAPR, I think, one of their conditions was that there'd be no more than 45, and that's perfectly, all of the DAPR conditions, Mr. Shapiro is prepared to accept. The other thing that we did was to check with neighbors, and the condominium board obviously sent in, and Mr. Shapiro talked to others, and his neighbors, the people that he spoke with on Glenwood, as well as the condominium association, none of them object to a special use. Because of Mr. Shapiro's being a very good neighbor and his commitment that if he's no longer owns those buildings, that they would revert to, and he'd do what he needed to do to help them revert to residential use.
Sir, may I interject with a couple of questions here?
Sure.
If this special use is not granted, what does Mr. Shapiro intend to do?
Well, I think if he can't operate his law practices at those two locations, then he would have to move.
So, you know, there's office space, Evanston has a healthy office market and office space available. Has he investigated that route?
I'm not sure that any of, he has looked, and I'm not sure that there's any spot in Evanston that's necessarily going to be, work as well as these two locations do for him.
And if he were to move out of that location, and maybe you can answer this, I'm not sure, if he were to move out of that location and sell the building, would he be held liable for the difference in taxes that would have been owed to the Cook County Assessor over those years that he was operating as a commercial business as opposed to residential?
And that would be up to the assessor's office, but regardless of the outcome, being that the city is aware of this, the city will report to the assessor's office, so I would think they would work through it then.
Well, you often have school boards who exert some influence over the assessor to recover restitution in cases like that as well.
And while the record is open, I wanted to ask of staff in the packet, it's a staff recommendation that the case be denied. DAPR recommends approval. Can you clarify the reasoning behind staff recommendation for denial?
So the DAPR recommendation, that is based more on each individual DAPR member's professional opinion. So if you're a traffic engineer, you're looking at it from a traffic perspective. So with those different perspectives, that's what led to the DAPR recommendation for approval. The planning and zoning staff's recommendation for denial is strongly based on two things, one being the lack of accessibility and what precedent that would set, and then the other being the potential precedent that could be set by allowing moderate to large-scale office use in a residential area.
Well, I think also, and this was not necessarily brought up, I think it was in one of the standards discussed in the DAPR or staff notes, is the fact that even though Mr. Shapiro is leasing a number of parking spaces, nobody drives down Chicago Avenue at 5 o'clock in the evening and doesn't sit there in a long line, traffic light after traffic light after traffic light. So it is, you know, 27 or so cars are contributing to that. And, you know, and typically, in, you know, paralegals will keep pretty regular hours because they're the ones who are compiling all of those files that are coming, that ultimately, Mr. Shapiro will take to the assessor's office to make his appeals. So I think that that has a negative impact on the neighborhood.
If I could just clarify one thing, there's only 11 spots behind, there's the couple in front. Most of them are at the Holiday Inn, which is a couple of blocks north, so it's really not in the same location. There's 11 parking spots, and I do believe people are coming or going at different parts of the day, and more than half of the employees. I'm not aware of any traffic study that would, when you consider the other commercial uses that are on the west side of the street and on the south half of the Chicago Avenue block between Glenwood and Dempster, I would at least just...
It's a major thoroughfare.
It is a major thoroughfare. There's no doubt about that. And that frankly, I think, is one reason why, when you look at it, that particular spot is owned residential, but everything around it, from, excuse me, the parking lot to the north, to the west side of the street, to a little bit south, is commercial. So in terms of whether or not it's going to diminish the property values, that was one of the points that was raised. We presented, we did a look at Zillow and Redfin, just to see what the valuations have been for properties on Glenwood or on Hinman, which is actually behind the alley, it's on the other side of the alley. And if you look at, and you see that, and there really hasn't been any apparent diminution in value, at least according to those two, over the last five years, which is the time when he acquired the Glenwood address and began to operate there. Ms. Klaas mentioned accessibility. As I said, we just politely disagreed about whether it was necessary, but the fact of the matter is, he's prepared to make the necessary investment, to make both, well, make the 1327 building accessible. So if there are any clients with accessibility issues or employees, there will be a space for the employees to work in the south portico, and there will also be an office area and a reception area for any client to come in. The sidewalk will be widened to accommodate, there'll be a parking spot in front for vans to be able to come, so it'll be there. Honestly, it's an investment for the period of time that Mr. Shapiro is going to be there, so it may not, you know, whenever he decides to retire or to sell those buildings, then they, in his mind, they're going to revert to residential use. But he's prepared to do that in order to be able to remain in Evanston and to continue a practice which, as the DAPR folks recognize, really doesn't have, from the exterior, any intense use or any incompatibility really with the area that surrounds the two structures.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And perhaps, this is for you, Melissa. You described how the business grew steadily over time, but I'm trying to understand, what is the criteria that changes the permissibility from being acceptable to have a home business to one that then requires a special use for what he's doing now?
The primary thing is that the property owner does not live there. But if he did live on-site, then the use could qualify as either a minor or a major home occupation, but there are limits to the hours that you operate, and more importantly, the one that this would definitely be overrun is the number of employees who do not reside at the property who work there.
Which is what?
I believe it's either one or two that you're allowed to have. So they're excessively over that.
Okay, so even though the business grew steadily, it's been out of compliance for a long time?
Yeah, he lived there until 2002, in the 1327. He didn't buy the 528 Greenwood until 2013, and then began to use it in 2014.
Okay.
So on that same line of questioning, did you say that his mother ran this same business?
She helped.
Oh, okay.
His mom and his aunt were the first two people who helped him with that.
Oh, they weren't running the same type of legal business there?
No, Richard is a lawyer, and, but, you know, you can use clerks or paralegals to help to gather the data that you need in order to present the information for a property tax appeal. So in the beginning, his mom, you know, decided to help him get started.
Okay.
And you alluded to the parking spaces, you spoke about the parking spaces that he leases from, it sounds like neighboring residents as well as then parking spaces at the nearby Holiday Inn, is that correct?
There's, yes, there's 11 at the Holiday Inn, which is, I think, is it on Sherman? Is that where, Sherman, several blocks north?
Yep, I know exactly where it's at.
And then two that are across the street from the, it's 1200, 1200 block of Chicago Avenue, and one at Elmwood and Dempster. Those are city of Evanston spots, I believe. And then there are 11 parking spots, space off the alley behind the building that he rents.
So I'm trying to understand, are those single-family residences that are leasing their extra parking spot to him?
I think there may be, but there are a number of different people who lease those 11 spots. It's not all one person.
No, I understand.
I think it's a couple of spots where there, there's an apartment building that's eight units.
Okay.
And I think there are a couple of spots there. There are a couple of spots directly, at least one, maybe two, directly behind the 1327, which is Richard's.
Yep.
And then I think there are a couple of spots, Ruth, aren't there on the other side of the alley, that Hinman addressed?
Okay. And a letter of opposition that we have suggests that there's a waiting list for the city lots. I don't know if staff or if anyone's aware if that's true information?
I don't know if there's a waitlist at all of the lots, but there is at at least some of them. And my understanding is the waitlist is roughly two years.
But I don't think any residents in that immediate area, I don't know the answer, but I would be a little surprised if there were residents, in fact, I would be very surprised because he did canvas the residents on Greenwood and then on Hinman, and didn't find anybody who needed a parking spot. So people in the immediate vicinity of where he lives don't need parking spots and aren't foregoing their own parking in order to accommodate Richard.
Thank you.
Do you have more, sir?
I'm just looking to see if there's any, and I certainly would answer any questions that anyone else has regarding the use or the, the other thing, I guess I would just reiterate, is he's fully prepared to honor the conditions and agree to abide by the conditions that DAPR has set forth, and to the extent that this board determines that the accessibility requirements are important, he's prepared to abide by those as well. And as we've mentioned a couple of times, he's certainly prepared to make amends with respect to anything having to do with assessment and property taxes on those two properties.
I have a question for you, Melissa. If this special use were to be approved with the conditions that modifications, quite a number of modifications, be made to accommodate accessibility in one of the units, that would significantly alter the appearance of the structure. And that might also alter the perception of the neighbors with regard to their acquiescing to this special use. Would this have to be re-noticed to residents if there was going to be that kind of modification made to these rather traditional... made to these rather traditional house structures?
It would not require re-noticing, but it would require preservation review. I would need to check with our law department to see what the best plan would be, but what I anticipate is that if that is a condition, that the case then proceeds to the Preservation Commission before it goes on to City Council for the special use to be determined, so that there is a full package.
It might be helpful, this is just something, the smaller version that we presented, excuse me, to DAPR. This, why don't I just hand this up and you can see it? The, it's this little part of the house right here that has a walk and an entryway where the landing would be expanded to accommodate and where the lift would go right in front of this side, so.
So, what typically called the front of the extension there?
Yeah, there's a sidewalk. It doesn't come through as clearly there that would be expanded. It's right now, I think probably about two feet and it would be expanded to...
But what do you think that involves?
Yes, and there's a, right, it would just, there's a landing which is probably a little obscured by the trees. And so, the lift would be right in front of that. But it's on the side of the house, so it wouldn't be the front entryway. That wouldn't be disturbed at all. I guess one last point I would make and then I'm more than willing and happy to answer any questions. I think the staff, at least in its report on the question of traffic congestion, did recognize that these residences, these office use did not contribute to any undue congestion in the area. So, I think at least in that point, we may not have agreed on all of the points, but in that point, we were in agreement. So, unless there are other questions, I'm happy to leave it at that for now and respond if anything comes up from anyone else.
Thank you. I think we have one neighbor that is here that wants to talk about this. Joe Goodman? I'm sorry, two neighbors. I'm sorry, sir, we only have one signed in.
Only one, his name's Joe.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Joe Goodman. My family's owned the eight-unit building at 522 Greenwood, which is contiguous to 1327 Chicago Avenue for 50 years. And Richard Shapiro has been the best neighbor we've had. And his business has very little coming and going. It's, I tell people that, you know, they mention, oh yeah, we have our tax appeals done by your neighbor and they can't believe he's in the house. I say, oh yeah, he's in that house. Because it's just very little activity going on there. Also, Richard asking for a limited amount of time, put that into perspective. Quite frankly, Richard's 68 years old, not in good health. He just doesn't want to rock the boat. He's got, he's got, he's very dedicated to his employees. He's, offers high-quality jobs with benefits, long-term employees. He's had many employees that have worked for him for quite a long time. He hires guys he went to high school and grammar school with. He's a loyal guy. And he just does, but on the other hand, he likes the setup that he's got right now. I think he's too old to change. He likes, he lives in a condo. He can just walk out his back door to his office. And just the setup that he's got is incredibly perfect for him. He's also a little bit eccentric and set in his ways. And so, I think that if you, there's any way that you could make an accommodation for, you know, for the duration of when he's running his business, I think it would be, his business is an asset to the neighborhood and to Evanston. He imply, he creates good jobs. I think if he were to, if the city were to shut him down, he probably, I wouldn't be surprised if he'd just sell his business and it would go to a firm in Chicago. They'd just be another large tax appeal business. For some reason, he's decided that he just, and this business has gone, grown organically from just operating out of his house and then it just, he's been successful. And, but, yeah, also my office is right across the street from him at 1326 Chicago Avenue, so I can give witness to the fact that there's very, very little coming and going. Quite frankly, I was shocked to find out he had that many employees working for him. And you asked about the parking. Yeah, a lot of the parking is on Hinman Avenue. Those houses on Hinman Avenue have a lot of frontage and a number, and I know there's one that has like no garage back there, just a big gravel lot. And I think that's probably where he has like 11 spaces all lined up. It's a great thing. That homeowner really likes him. But anyways, he's always done a good job of accommodating parking. My building, the eight-unit building, if I ever have an extra spot, I let one of his employees use it for free because I might have to take it away from him. But ordinarily, I have an extra spot because I'll have tenants that find out it's easier to, they'd rather save $75 a month and park on the street because street parking is okay. Especially if you're a resident, you can get the, you know, residence-only sticker. So, I admit this, I'm in the real estate business. This is a little bit of an unusual request, but I think this is, this is worth making exception for a limited, a limited amount of time. We don't know how limited it is, but it's limited.
I was caught by something you said about residence stickers. So, residence stickers are required to park where?
On, I'm aware of the block of, the 500 block of Greenwood. On one side of the street, it's two-hour parking unless you have residence sticker. Because they don't want people, and then on the, on the west side of Greenwood there, you can park for a long period of time. But the city has made it, has put up deterrents so that people don't park there and hop on the Demster.
Do we know if Richard has residence stickers?
Yeah, he's never used any residence stickers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The other neighbor, would you just state your name and address for the record? We haven't had you on the sign-in sheet.
I got here before you told me I had to do that, so I didn't know any better. Sorry.
Thank you.
Tom Palonas. So, my name is Tom Palonas. I'm the president of the Edmonton Condominium Association. We are that 20-unit condo that's right behind, we're actually good neighbors too, if you can, I hope. And we're adjacent to, our property is adjacent to the 1327 property, so it's directly north of us. And then that puts us very close to the property on Greenwood, you know, like within 100 feet or something, so. I'm going to make, I had actually sent in some material and I think, it feels like it was shared because it sounds like you have read that material. So, tell me if it gets boring here, I'm going to cover some of the same thing. So, we did open occupancy in 97 and we were fully occupied by owners by mid-98. And it was only a few months later that Richard acquired the property. But we've been neighbors with Richard and, you know, his business for 20 years now, 20-plus years. A couple of things. First, I want to, I want to thank the, thank the City of Evanston for the work that the various departments have done in trying to maintain the business, the codes and everything for buildings. And specifically for Melissa and for Cade because we heard about this and we didn't, we had no idea what was going on. And so, we reached out, I reached out to the zoning board and both Melissa and Cade were very capable in providing much material. In fact, for a little light reading, go back to the old DAPR, you know, meeting notes of like 200 pages in March of last year. So, we went through that with the board and then we compiled the comments, et cetera. So, we also appreciate the efforts that Mr. Shapiro will go through in order to bring his business back into, into code because it's not, it's not trivial. Our owners were a little concerned. I explained to them in the board meeting we had in early January that this was about, we were about to have a meeting and that we were likely to attend. And we had collected information from the owners and questions. And one of the questions they had was what could this do to our property values? So, we surveyed several realtors in the area, familiar with the building, familiar with the area, and they universally said that there would, you can appreciate, expect to appreciate or see no reduction in your property values. And I think that's something that Richard's attorney had said as well. We have a concern about the ADA. It seems like the compliance is a little limited. But Richard does offer options for conducting business. We're a customer of his. And I have been to his office several times and that's not, it hasn't been an issue for me. We were able to do our business that way. If anybody who was handicapping to do business, he does accommodate that, so we see that as a plus. We talked about, you already talked about the taxes and reconciliation, but that was a question that we had, a comment, concern. Sounds like that'll happen. In one of the meetings, I don't know if it was, if it was you that had said, you were interested perhaps in landmarking? It was in the November meeting of last year. And the note said, the lawyers, the attorney, legal counsel, but that interests us as well. I don't know if that's something that would help or hurt us, but it sounds interesting. On a negative note, we've had very few incidents of, we had no significant issues at all with Richard. 20 years, 20-plus years. Last July, we had someone park in one of our parking spaces. Our parking spaces behind the condo are owned. And so, we have assigned spaces. And so, one of our owners came, came home and had, the car was there, determined that it was one of Richard's employees, contacted me. I said, reach out to Richard, see if you can get your satisfaction and they'll take care of it. And so, she reached out to Richard and he took care of it immediately. It happened again the next day. The process, we went through the same process and the process has worked. So, 20-plus years, a couple of times, you know, we could have a towing service and go do that. We didn't, we don't think that's neighborly and we're concerned that our owners would end up having our fellow owners' cars towed perhaps, so we opted not to do that. Those are the comments that I have. I think in closing, the recommendation that we would have as a block of 20 owners that have been associated with, you know, the business there for, you know, many years, we do view Richard and his practice as a good neighbor. We recognize that it's a lot of activity there, but it's not really that visible activity and it's not intrusive, it doesn't get in the way of anything. So, we would say if Richard brings the buildings into compliance, and that includes the physical buildings and the tax compliance, then we're fully supportive of you approving his request. We think that that's what should be done.
Thank you, Mary. I'll pose a question to you.
Sure.
So, your, this condo building is located on Chicago Avenue, just south of the two properties?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay. And so, we've heard some about the potential physical changes that may be done on the exterior of the building in order to bring, you know, the building up to ADA compliance, which would change sort of how, would change the over residential, the overall residential appearance of the building. Do you think that would impact how the owners of the condominium building would, would view this proposal?
I would say in total, no, but we haven't seen the design. There, the sidewalk, that's, that goes to that space, that is the target, if you will, for the lift. There are bushes between our property and Richard's. We may lose a bush. Actually, that may be Richard's, but someone may lose a bush in the deal. Other than that, I don't anticipate that being, we have several people in our, in our association that are handicapped. We have, so we're familiar with, you know, what it takes to accommodate and, and so I don't think that's going to be an issue. Yeah. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay. I feel like if we're going to continue this to the next, do we need a motion to continue?
We do. I mean, it's up to the applicant. I mean, if you guys would like the board to close testimony and deliberate and make a recommendation, they are the recommending body, so it is not your final decision tonight. Or if you are more comfortable requesting a continuance so that Richard can be at the next hearing, we can go that route.
I guess I'd ask the board members, if the board members would like to hear from Mr. Shapiro himself, then, you know, we'd be happy to continue to have him come. But if they believe they've got enough information now, then we could go ahead and, because, you know, speaking optimistically, if we do need to then go to the Historic Preservation Commission to make sure that they don't have a problem with the lift, we'd want to start to do that as soon as we could.
Could they start to do that in this continuance time? During this time, before the next meeting? Because it might help us if we saw the design for the ADA compliance.
It seems to me, and again, I defer to, I think this is a point of deliberation for us, but it seems to me that since we are only a recommending body on this, that if we, as a board, I mean, if we feel as though we can make a recommendation, this will then proceed one way or the other. Whether we recommend that the council approve or that the council not approve, it will go to the next phase. And that will give Richard another chance to present the case personally and perhaps with very specific designs for ACA, ADA accessibility. So, I, for this, again, if I were the applicant, I would rather the process move along. But, because we're a recommending body. But I, once again, if the board here believes that it is in our better interest to hear personally from Richard and to get more information on how the ADA accessibility would be achieved with designs, et cetera, then we can continue and hear more at the next meeting.
What's the will of the board? Move forward, go for a vote?
Personally, I would like to hear from Mr. Shapiro because I think the city council will ask mainly the questions that are with the past of these buildings and why now. So, this will be, I believe, the major question from the city council. It's not a zoning question and I understand that, but I would like to hear firsthand how things develop in time. And now we are facing a serious question with changing the use of the place. So, my preference would be to hear from Mr. Shapiro firsthand.
I agree. As it stands tonight, based on the testimony that I've heard this evening, I'm inclined to not support the special use. I have questions for Mr. Shapiro and I share your thoughts as to, I think, you know, that would be my preferred, you know, my preferred path.
I agree.
And I would say that I think, based on the mood I'm sensing here, that it would behoove Mr. Shapiro to make a direct appeal. I mean, I don't think that, that anyone on this board wants to put, you know, a 68-year-old lifelong Evanston resident, working man, out of business. On the other hand, there has clearly been a lot of inappropriateness in the way he has developed and conducted the business. So, maybe hearing from him firsthand would ameliorate that.
That's fine. The other thing I would say too is that Mr. Dudnick, Elliot Dudnick, who's the architect, who was the, he did cite... he did site plans for the accessibility piece, which I think are in your packets. But to the extent that the board would have questions for him about how all of that would work, hopefully, he was unable to come tonight too, but hopefully, we could get him to the next meeting as well.
Yeah, I myself understand that this type of business can definitely be handled mostly online at this point, because that's how I would handle my tax appeal. But I can only imagine that over 40 years, that it has not been that. That's more recent. And that's more having to do with the people that want to work right now. I just can imagine that there has been past problems with the community. And I'm not surprised to hear that he was, that a charge was brought in order for this entire thing to come before us. And I'd like to hear from him as well.
You know, and as I say, he is, assuming that the spinal stenosis is abated and he's able to come, he certainly would. Because I think he would also tell you that before online, the telephone was the way that most people were able to contact him. And I think as you heard from his neighbors, there really haven't been any incidents of congestion or crowding or anything else. But, you know, he's certainly prepared to come and to answer any questions that you all may have personally.
And I'm glad to hear the neighbors aren't stressed. I'm glad that they're saying that it's been fine. Thank you. So, board, are we going to continue this? Could someone make a motion for continuing?
So based on what has been said, are you requesting a continuance then?
Sure, yes. It sounds like everyone wants to hear from Mr. Shapiro, so we would request a continuance for him to be able to appear personally.
Okay. So we make that motion?
I move that we continue this case to the March 17th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So just to clarify, testimony is open, so you are welcome to submit any additional documentation, present any new information, anything that you want at the next hearing.
Thank you.
According to our agenda, we have no other business. The discussion, I need a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
If anybody would like me to hold their binders for them until the next meeting, I can.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you March 17th.